Do you have a couple of chairs if you want to pull them back and sit down, you're more than welcome to. So you stand up the longest, you get the comfy chair. They are. I appreciate him getting the extra stocky version for me.
The picture.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I remember, you know, as a kid having to wear husky jeans too. Oh, well, about six thirty, so let's, we have a quorum and we will call a meeting to order. First item up on our, on our agenda today is the approval of our consent agenda, which will include the minutes from our one four two zero twenty two regular city council meeting and vouchers totaling two hundred and fifty two thousand one hundred and seven dollars seventy cents and several appointments, planning commission appointments, Gary Tibbetts. So these are all for the planning commission, we Gary Tibbetts for a one year term, Krista Heinrichs, a two year term, Ken Kazlofski, a three year term and Jesse, three year term. And then there is one item that's not listed, that is for our recreation commission and that will be Bob Welk, that will fill the unexpired term of Dana Maxfield, who submitted her resignation. And that will, that term will go through two thousand twenty four. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Is that available online or something?
It is. Yes, it is. It's on our Facebook page and is it on the website? Yes.
Okay.
Um, I had a question on the notes. I know the past, I've been going by Blake by.
Uh huh.
And this is Anthony Blake, but which is fine. I just didn't know if that mattered or not.
How, how do you want to be recognized?
I go by Blake, so.
Okay, well, then I think that's, that's acceptable.
Okay.
Matt?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
However, you want to be.
All right. Any other questions? Everybody did receive copies of the minutes and copies of the vouchers. So we will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted with the addition of Bob Welk to the rep commission.
I moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Triggers. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries four oh, consent agenda is approved. Our next item is a belated oath of office for Councilman David Lowen, who is joining us via Zoom tonight. So Matt, I will let you and Danielle take that away.
Danielle will administer the oath of office.
All right, David, I'll stand and I had sent you this in advance. And so you have the information in front of you and repeat after me. Hi, David Lowen.
Hi, David Lowen.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Councilman Lowen, and we appreciate your service. And welcome back to the council and we will now move into our public comment section, which I promised folks that we would put at the head of the agenda so they wouldn't have to be here all night while we took care of other business. And just a couple of things I want to go over before we get started. As everybody should be or hopefully is aware, the city council did approve a public comment policy back in November. And we asked, we asked for public comments for speakers to, to make it known that they wanted to speak and we've had several people that have done that and put their names and addresses on a speaker sheet, which Danielle has in her possession. I know we have some folks online that may want to speak as well. And I want everybody to know that anybody that's here and wants to be heard in particular on the container housing issue will be heard. And everybody will get a chance to speak up to five minutes. And there are, of course, I will remind folks that there are rules of decorum that are applicable. And so I will ask everybody to, to abide by those and to keep your remarks civil and to the point and not directed at individuals. And the, the comment should relate to the business that we're talking about. And it's not a debate. We're not going to have people within the audience debating the speaker. The speaker is going to get a chance to, to be heard. And once we've had, everybody's had a chance to, to speak on this tonight, we will have no further public comment for the rest of the, this, this evening on, on this item. So if everybody is, is okay with that, we will, I will ask City Clerk Daniel Bartle to start with the first person on the list. And if you are here in person, I'm going to ask that you come to the podium here so that you can be seen on camera by those that are watching or what, or will be watching the recording of this meeting. So if you'll do that, please.
The first individual I have listed is Stan Teason. So I don't see Stan in the room.
Stan online?
He does not appear to be. No, no.
We'll check, check the. All right, no Stan. Next is Rod Coons.
Okay.
Yes. Rod Coons, Rod and Carrie Coons, we live at three eighteen North Adams. Have since nineteen ninety three. And kind of before we start here, I almost wanted to vote from being on school board for four terms. When he said he was in favor, I almost chimed in. So I, I don't know, just kind of. That's that way. So.
I get it.
Yeah, just going with the people, used to that. So I appreciate the chance to come and speak. I don't have anything written down. I speak from my heart. And I'm going to start off by saying that twenty five years ago, I guess I'll step back and say that, that, that progress is important. Progress is important to any organization, community, any business, and we do. Twenty five years ago, the city of Hillsborough took a chance on Perry and I in a fledgling, fledgling business, in a new development town. And basically, all that we came together with and forward with was a, was a concept, an idea. Much like the idea and the concept that we're talking about now, which is what it is. And we appreciate that the city and those involved took a chance on us as we have to on any idea or anything that we as a community deem to be a responsible, reasonable act. I, I think that's, that's totally understood. Do we, do we as citizens have to agree with everything? Unfortunately not. But we, we all have to be able to coincide together and, and, and make this thing work. And, you know, I would say that initially, as we look at the development along, or the perceived development along North Southern Third Street, at this point, it's, it doesn't paint you rosy a picture. It's, that's the brutally honest truth. We've got property that doesn't look good. We've got infrastructure there that's very little developed. And to me, in my estimation and my, my opinion, doesn't look like an area that we can support any type of house. It's just my opinion there. And I think we have to be careful as a community in anything that we, that we look at, that we have to not want to jump at things in desperate measure. And I think that's, that's a, an important thing to look at. We have to, one, realize who we are. We have to realize that we are not a community that would be identified as an Andover or even as a, as a, as a Linsborg because of where we're physically located. I would, I would, I would just implore our, our leadership to, to, to look at these opportunities in a way of not looking at just what we see today as an opportunity, but to look at things of what's this going to look like down the road? What's this, what, 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 what picture is this kind of paint to our community? And then what, what are we going to do with it if, if the project doesn't come to fruition or if it doesn't work? That's, that's, I guess, my, I guess, opinion. I, I, again, we are not against progress. We are not against new things. We're not against things happening. But I think we have to look at what can us, what can we as a community support and put together to fire, to, to, to keep ourselves fired? That would be what I would have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rod.
All right, then next on the list is Mark Pankrats. Mark Pankrats.
Mark is here online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mark.
Yeah, Mark Pankrats, in North Adams. Yeah, I was just looking and said the zoning can be anywhere in residential area for these container homes. And I think that's one thing we need to address. And I understand the developer of the mobile home park. You know, I guess I'm curious why he doesn't do his development out there to start and see how things will go and see if it takes off. I have no problem with container homes, but you know, it is a different type of living style. I noticed the floor space of the twenty by eight foot is a hundred and sixty square feet. And the forty foot by eight foot is three hundred and twenty feet. And on the building, expected the minimum area for a single family resident to six hundred, six hundred square feet or. Excuse me. And also mentioned on there that the exterior wall surface cannot be corrugated metal, so I'm not sure how that plays into it. And of course, what everybody thinks about is the aesthetic appeal, you know, try to make it look uniform to the other buildings and structures in that area. And I'm just not sure how many container homes that people, you know, want to live in or live next to. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Right, next is Larry Payne.
This is where members of council, it's kind of strange to be on this side of the table. I, I started out today with sending Matt an email that had a URL for a space where I saw container homes that had been dressed up. And I thought it, you know, it would be better to send it to him to send to you so that, you know, I could get to everybody. I didn't have yours. It was just, that was just a way of dealing with it. I remember the last couple of weeks of my time in city administrator here, we worked with the developer to do some things on, with the trailer park. You know, when you walk out the door, you don't actually follow up on a lot of those things. I don't know where that development agreement went, whether it was done, but I know that there's a certain amount of things that we were talking about that were actually accomplished. The developer planned on putting some container housing on the east side of his property. And as I drove around there yesterday, I, you know, I saw them. Like Rod, a moment ago, I, what he said a moment ago was the, I wrote down a note about the appearance as you come into the city. And one of the things that I've had to deal with in my career is, you know, how do we, how do people perceive your community when you drive in? And, you know, so this was a question that, that I raised under the, that process of thinking of, of that. So I came up with, with two thoughts about what you might do. And when Matt responded to my email this morning, he said some things were similar to what I'm about to say. And I'm thinking about, you know, if you wanted to proceed with this, you'd want to do a development agreement as one option. Just lay out all of the, the conditions that you have and certainly a condition that, that I would be putting on the table would be how this, how these structures look. You know, one of the things that I was looking for when I went through that little space on the, on the website was what do these look like? I had some good responses and I had some bad responses to the, the samples that they were showing there. One of the concerns that I had was the name of the shipping company that the container used to belong to was plastered on the side of one of these buildings. You know, I don't think that that's something that, you know, that I would like to see in my community. Now, I thought about that. How do I say my community? I used to be a hired gun, but now I live here, so I can use the word my affirmatively. The second part was looking at zoning issues. And Matt came up with, with this. This was, I also posed the question to one of my friends in the planning environment. A referral to the planning commission to set some standards for what a subdivision like this might look like. You know, I understand the lots that are out there that, that Russell is primarily owner of now. Was it seventeen or nineteen lots altogether? There's a number of them, you know. You know, the way I look at it, if I were sitting in his shoes, you know, how do we manage that aesthetics issue? And I'm, I would encourage really sending this question to the planning commission to develop standards for what these, what a container home would look like, not only on the inside, but also on the outside. The outside is what people are going to look like when they drive down Third Street. You know, and so I would encourage one of those two, maybe both, that sort of thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Robert Herzit and Marlene Herzit, Robert is out in the overflow if you would want to grab him.
Here he is. Come on in, Robert. If you'll stand there at the podium so we can get you on camera.
All right.
Other, so people that are watching can see you.
Yeah. Well, my wife and I live on three sixteen North Jefferson, right across from this. One of the issues with these container homes is, is the aesthetics of it. The other is I drove by the trailer park and I've got some information that was dropped off in my house today about used containers, that they should never be used for housing because of what chemicals were in them, treated floors. And I think if the city proceeds with this, as one of my neighbors was, had a commitment, couldn't be here tonight. He says, is the city going to be willing to say, okay, we approve this, but then when people living in this home gets sick, if they develop cancer, do their children develop cancer? Because we don't know what chemicals were in these used homes. So my point was if we were going to use these, they would need to be new, new containers that have never been on a cargo ship coming from China. I work at Agco and I know what all our steel is like, what we get from there. And it's, it comes over on ships. And the chemicals that are on that, that material, a lot of it, we have to run it through a bead blaster to remove scale and oil and stuff because you can't even weld it. So that's, that's one issue of it. The other issue my wife brought up is, and, and insulating these things, you start insulating them. And where we live is like living on the North Pole. When she bought that house in, I believe it was ninety three, she moved back here from California. She grew up in Durham. Her husband and her come back and then he was unfortunately killed in an auto accident. But it, it is, is unbelievable cold there. That's why I put a central boiler furnace. Because the gas, if you wanted to keep the house comfortable, you were going to go broke with gas. Well, you take metal, when it gets cold, it's cold. So if you have to insulate this thing with six inches of insulation, now you're down to just, you, again, you've shrunk the size. And then also this information was given to me, when you start cutting into these things, you've, you've lost the structural integrity of it. They're built to be stacked on corners and stacked up. They can carry a big load that way, but once you start with that corrugated metal and it's been cut into, that weakens it. So then it has to be reinforced and welded. My grandson went, moved down to Oklahoma for a while and worked on a ranch. And his living quarters was one of these container homes. And it was a disaster. It was all, the windows leaked. There was always water coming in. And he was there just a short time and he says, this isn't working out. He left, quit the place and moved back home. So there was just, there's a lot of negatives to this. And not to mention, I, I believe what it'll do to our property values as the people that live, live in the area and try to take care of the homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
I would just say if Marlene has anything to add, I forgot your name as well.
No, I agree with what everybody has already said. They're supposed to be towards low income, but can you get how, HUD loans for these type of things? Can you get personal or home loans for these type of things? I don't see them as being low income at all. If you have a personal loan out, how does that make sense? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Marlene.
All right. The next we have is Glenn Myers.
Yeah, my name is Glenn Myers. My wife Susan is out in the annex or connected room here. My son and daughter-in-law live at three oh eight North Madison and we came out Christmas time, just after Christmas time to stay with them because they had a family health issue and three kids. So anyway, and that's when I found out about this issue coming, coming around. And so a lot of the neighbors have, the guy across the street from us, he came over, knocked on the door and told my daughter-in-law about it and she told me. And then I said, well, the first thing I'm going to do is try to find out how much information anybody has because a lot of, we got a lot of rumors going around, misinformation. So I came down to City Hall and I think I met Danielle one day and she told me how to, how to handle it. And I sent a letter, I think, to each one of you, just with my general feelings on it. So let's see, it's Mr. Pankrats, Pan, Pankrats? He came around and gave us all the neighbors a copy of this letter. Did you get a copy of this? Okay, good. Because he, he brought up a lot of issues like Robert talked about, where, where Robert go? He's in the other room. And things that I didn't even think about. So, yeah, good information. And I don't have all the answers to this, but you have my general comments in my letter. And I went over and saw the, the three units that had been put in over at the mobile home park. And I can understand the use of that, of that as dwellings, short, short-term rental or they call them Airbnb or what they might call them. But it has its place and I think that's a good place to, to try it out. I think there's lots of, lots of different ways to make them aesthetically pleasing. And, you know, like Ron mentioned, right off the bat, I mean, you've got established residential on one side of the street. And those people have to leave their driveways every morning and, and look at their neighbors. And, you know, we all like to look at our neighbors and we like to look at, at their homes and their pride in their homes. And that's what we'd like to see continue. And understand, you know, a small city like this, you know, we all like to get together because everybody knows everybody else. So pretty much my feelings are the same as everybody else has stated. So I'll just shorten it and say, thanks for letting me have an opportunity.
Well, thank you for coming up.
You're very welcome.
Next we have Bob Hebert. Bob Hebert. I'm sure he's out in the hall or in the. And then after that is Jonah.
Hearing.
I really don't have much to say other than what's been said already. I mean, everybody's got a passion and a viewpoint. Just think that we shouldn't stifle any progress. We should always invite progress. But the, a lot of things that a lot of people didn't know, including myself until today. And the square footage of a single residential family home, six hundred square feet. I think a lot of people would have, if they'd have heard that in the beginning, they wouldn't be concerned about the single wides, you know, and that's probably what comes to most people's minds. When you got to start putting these things together, it, it changes things, especially in some people's minds, and maybe not. But I just hope that we can understand how important planning and zoning is. If you get asked to be on planning and zoning, it's a, is how we deal with these things before they come up. And it keeps people from just jumping in somebody's way. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Jonah.
Those are the members of the public that were listed, other than Felix and Crystal Ramirez. So you guys are welcome to speak.
We were going to answer any questions that people had to kind of inform them of what, what we're actually doing. I know that there's a big, there's a big misconception that, that we're going to build these single wide trailers that are thirty six.
If you don't mind, would you please step up here just for our viewing audience? That would be beneficial. Thank you.
So there's a, there's a big misconception that we're going to build these single wide trailers.
Yes. Can we get the gentleman's name?
Sure.
Felix Ramirez.
Thanks.
Yep. So the misconception is that we're going to build the single wide trailers in the community of Hillsborough. And that's not, that's not even close to true. We've been working with containers for a while. There's data plates on there that let you know everything about the container and what was ever shipped in that, how many voyages it's taken, everything. So, and we work with engineers that know the structural support of these containers. They're built to have, you know, five hundred thousand pounds stacked on top of each other. We know that the main pinpoints of these containers are the four strong posts on the end. We know how to cut into these containers. This isn't our first rodeo. What we're planning on doing is we're trying to build affordable housing. And yeah, it's modern, it's changed, it's different. But has anybody ever been in one of these containers that we have out in the trailer park that we are making Airbnbs? I mean, these things have the highest-end products in them. They have energy-efficient appliances. We run the heat all day long and they stay warm. And our electric bill is twenty seven dollars. I myself have never had a twenty seven dollar electric bill. So I'm pretty sure as far as making these into affordable housing, yeah, people would love to save on their electric bill. People would love not to have to side their house for years and years, like traditional housing. The reason why we pick container homes is they're rugged, they're tough. Yes, aesthetically, we're going to make them look like houses. You're not seeing our finished product out in the trailer park. We still have to evolve. I mean, yes, it is modern. It isn't your traditional stick build. But there's so many beneficial factors to having a container house. The energy and it keeps the heat in, it keeps the coolant. The energy, uh, and it keeps the heat in, it keeps the coolant in. So you're not wasting your, your money on bills. The roof, you're never gonna replace the roof. It's made out of metal. The siding, you know, you're not gonna get termites in these things because it's metal. You're not gonna eat through it. So your investment is gonna stay a good, solid investment for years and years to come. And they're talking about the container floors. Yes, we've been through this. We've heard all the negative, but people in other states are starting to use containers more and more. I mean, it's happening all around us. I mean, can we evolve to have it happen here? I think it's a great thing for affordable housing. And it's a great way to protect your investment. It's a rugged steel box. I, I wanna try to address all the questions that were asked, but do you guys have any, anything to ask? I mean,
Some of the ones that people have mentioned, like the ability to get HUD loans or, or the financing, is that a problem?
Well, the HUD loans, I, I mean, I don't know too much about the HUD loans because I don't sell on that market, but as far as bank, traditional financing, I think it'll take some work. Bankers are just now starting to get, get a hold of this. I had a conversation with a banker the other day about, you know, how to process the loan and everything. I think once I take container house out of the equation and say house, they're more apt to, yeah, absolutely. It, it's changed for even the banking world. Are banks lending on them right now? Yes, absolutely. You're gonna have to go look for those banks that are already out there in front of everybody else lending on them. But like my homeowner's insurance on, on these boxes, that, you know, we go through farmers with all of our investment properties and it's four hundred dollars a year, like to do your homeowner's insurance. And it's, it's like the, they know that it's free money because they're like, what claim are you gonna file? You're not gonna file a health claim, like traditional stick bill, you know? And in the place that we live in, we have the extreme weather. We go from night to day really quick, you know? So with these container houses, they don't take a beating like traditional stick bill. Not gonna waste your money on re-roughing the house because we had a health store for replacing the siding. So does anybody have any other questions about this? I mean, aesthetically, what we have in the trailer park isn't our product that we're gonna have elsewhere. And we have investment properties in different states, you know, and I'm hoping that we can adapt to change here and, and allow us to build and show the community how nice these things could actually be because you can put the highest-end products in these things. And, you know, everybody that's walked in the one that we have in the trailer park is totally changed by it. They're like, unexpected to look like this. This is nice. I would, I would live in this, is what I'm being told. But everybody driving by just looks at it and goes, oh, it's a box. Yeah, I think it's fitting for the trailer park. I think it actually looks nicer than some of the mobile homes that are in that park. But, um, does anybody have any other questions?
Do you have an example of, uh, like, just like a picture or visual representation we can see?
I don't have one on me. I, I don't know, Matt. Do you have anything that you?
I would just be going on to the internet.
Yeah, we'd just be having, I really don't. I mean, you guys can go on YouTube and look at the actual houses and the aesthetics of the house and how they're throwing them out there in different cities and states and see exactly how they are. I mean, the ones in the container park, single, and we're not, I say we're not gonna rent those out yet, but we're, we use them, we're using them for the sole purpose of an Airbnb to bring people into the community so that they could come, stay with their kids in college, be next to them, not have to go to the next town over because we don't have any lodging. So, I mean, I, I would love to have a picture for you guys, but with us not having, you know, everything ready for our actual first build, we don't have anything to show you as of right now.
You can look on Google, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah. Like an actual build, but.
David Zeller had his hand up first. So David, if, if you're gonna allow questions here, yeah. David, if you wanna unmute, you can.
Yeah, I actually wanted to come on a public comment. I know this town has a ordinance for recycling. Every year we have a arts festival that there's a few vendors that actually have recycled products that they use and sell them that actually look really good. The the idea, the initial idea of a container home, I understand a lot of people have mixed feelings on it. With some of my travels, I've actually seen them completed. They actually look really nice. With the with wanting to basically recycle shipping containers to a home, I actually think that's a good idea for this community because there are constantly people looking for housing in this area. Aesthetically, not sure exactly what the outside's gonna look like without seeing a finished one. But seeing some of the houses around town, some of the houses around town aesthetically probably need a little work versus these containers. My opinion is if it's something that he wants to do and the city's willing to do it, I would say let him do it. Cutting them and he's, like he said, with the engineers that he, that they deal with, with cutting them, yes, the structural integrity is compromised by cutting them, but if they're working with engineers to put them back together with the added strength that they need, then the integrity is still there. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Did we get Mr. Zeller's address? Mr. Zeller, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, it's, uh, one oh eight South Birch.
Thank you very much.
We had Marlene had her hand up.
And then we had a question here in the audience as well, so.
I just didn't think he answered the question about getting a loan very well. I think he kind of sidestepped that.
Okay, Marlene, is that a, is that a question?
No, but here's my, here's my question. Here's my question. So he didn't bring any pictures of any that he can show us. So where can we look? He said he's developed them here, other states. Where can we go to look at his developments?
We've had lake houses that we've built. And we've got the three out there. We're constantly working with the containers right now. We don't have any online yet. When we finish these two other projects, we will have all three of them on Airbnb and you, you're welcome to take a look at it. And as far as the banking question, you can get financed on these. You're just gonna have to find the bank that will finance you. So yes, you can get financed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
I, I have a little bit more of a pointed question. I assume, uh, Mr. Ramirez, you're the one that had bought the lots on Third. Correct? You own the lots on Third?
I do not own the lots on Third.
Mr. Groves has been sitting right here. He's the owner, current owner of those lots.
He's gonna be the contractor or builder.
No.
No?
Then, then these gentlemen are work, are, are in negotiations on the property right now.
Okay. Well, uh, my concern is not seeing what kind of a, uh, product he proposes for the existing lots on Third. We can see what he built in the mobile home park
Right.
and seeing is believing. So, uh, that part I can, I can recognize. So I would be, uh, wondering when he would be able to show us a representation of what he does propose for Third Street. So that we don't have to decide, you guys don't have to decide until you see something. You can look at YouTube any way you want, but it's not gonna be the same as what he puts on Third Street.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else online that, uh, that would like to speak?
Anybody else? Raise your hand or unmute.
Doesn't look like it, sir.
All right. Russell, is there anything you, you would like to say?
Only thing that I would like people to understand is that Felix is not proposing single wide, he's proposing two containers side by side. So sixteen wide by forty.
Which is six hundred and forty square foot.
Which would meet the requirement. Okay.
I didn't get his full name.
Russell Groves. Groves, G R O V E S, huh? Okay, thank you Felix.
Russell, I will, could I get your address as well?
Ten sixty-five, one fortieth.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no other public comment, then we will, uh, close public comments on this issue. And again, I wanna thank everybody that has spoken tonight and appreciate your input, your opinions and your thoughtful remarks. And I appreciate everybody's, uh, uh, ability to maintain decorum on, on an issue that maybe is passionate for some people. So, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And you know, if you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, you don't have to leave, but you're welcome to leave if you, if you'd like to. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks. Don't let the door inch in the butt on the way out.
Back to normal.
Oh, yeah. Well, it was online, I guess, with Zoom, with the, with the mask thing, but
The dog ordinance.
But the dog ordinance, we had.
It was the biggest crowd we ever had.
Yeah. Do not call my doggy dangers. So, anyway. All right. Well, again, I appreciate everybody's remarks and, and the opportunity for, uh, for people to be heard. We'll now move into our business items section E, Mr. Stiles, and we'll let you take it away.
Yes, sir. So what we have in front of you here is ordinance thirty-one forty-one, or thirteen forty-one, excuse me, which is the codification and the online code. Um, so the city's contracted with City Code Financial. If you go onto our website, you can see that we have, uh, our, our city code, which is searchable, uh, database style code. Um, and that actually is the most up-to-date version of the code. It always take, we take, anytime we get, um, a new ordinance, we update it to that and they take and update those things. And so that it's always up to date and it's always on the city's webpage and you can always find it in a relatively uh, simple manner. So what, what the issue is, is that that has never officially been codified as the code. Codified means just adopted as the official code. And so what this ordinance does is to take and, uh, make that the official code and exempts out some specific things that we do, like any ordinance that we pass for zoning, uh, taxing, public right-of-way, those kind of things. Those don't end up in the city code. Those just are, are official actions of the city. Uh, but this will take and, uh, officially codify that version of the city code. We made sure that everything that we have passed is in there and it's accurate and complete. Um, and then it also, I'm thinking of the, all the other, uh, versions of the code and then are null and void. Um, and so this becomes the official version. There's no, there's no financial piece to this. We already have city code. It actually is a very, it's a good tool. It's a great tool. And then whenever there's a question about the code, I go and use it myself because it's much easier to find things. So that's what this, um, it repeals, that's the word, it repeals all the other versions of the code. Uh, so this makes it the official code. And of course, um, you know, as far as backups of that go, it's, it's digital documents. So there's always something that could potentially, it could go offline, something like that. We do always keep a assigned official copy of that in the archive. So if anyone ever wants to look at the assigned official paper version, we have those also in there. So it, it does all the minutes of the vouchers, I have resolution, every action, city is all in paper form as well. So we're asking for approval of ordinance thirteen forty-one and, um, that's what we're asking for today.
Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve ordinance thirteen forty-one and authorize the mayor to sign.
Also move.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will pull the council. Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman By?
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen forty-one is hereby approved, that four zero. Thank you very much. And we have a Hillsborough Ford invoice to approve.
Sir, thank you. Um, so we have, uh, what you have there is kind of how Ford does this for us, is they provide us with a statement and then we have the invoices that come behind that. So you can kind of see what work was done there. And we had work done on, uh, Ford Taurus, which is police department. Uh, we also had some work done on another Taurus, uh, which is also a police department. We have a lot of police department work. I think these are all actually police department. Oh, so Chevy, Chevy Silverado, that's a Ben thing. So that would be the fire department. Um, and then we had some parts, stuff that we purchased through there too. So, uh, the total on that is thir- uh, one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Thirteen thirty-eight and.
Thirteen thirty-eight and thirty-four cents.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve that statement for payment? Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger's seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those abstaining?
Abstaining.
All those opposed, the motion carries three with one abstention. And again, the reason we're doing that is, is Mr. By works for Hillsborough Ford as we did for Elcon when, uh, when, uh, Councilman Gearing was on, was on the council, we just, it's just easier to break those out and allow them the opportunity to abstain. We now have items for future consideration. Mr. Stiles?
Okay, so we have, uh, the CIP development per, uh, contract with, uh, EBH and Darren's here to maybe talk a little bit more about that. I would just say that the capital improvement plan is a really important planning document that helps us, um, tackle different projects and issues.
I know, I know.
It's something that we, we need to do. It's, it's part of our strategic plan, but it's something we've never officially formally had, to my knowledge. Um, and so I'll let Darren kind of explain what goes into that process.
You really want me behind your back?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. I know you got my back.
Yeah, as Matt said, uh, this is something we don't, not too many communities formalize something into this, into this level, but it's something each one of you end up needing and using almost every year, especially as you in your budget process. So what we've done is we've gone over with both the staff, the department heads and Matt, and it came up with a list of, of areas that are something we need to kind of keep an eye on and look at, whether it's to help us get into some of the grant planning or, or grants out there to apply for, or just so that everybody knows where we need to head with these different things. So what we've done on this contract is we've broken it up into streets, airport, sidewalk and trails, which that's, that's a combination of water distribution, water treatment, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment and stormwater. Those are kind of the infrastructure areas we, uh, said, hey, with this first contract, this first look, this first year, we think these are the important ones, what we've heard from city staff and department heads. So, uh, with each one of the So with each one of those, basically, we're gonna, well, and there's a kind of a separate one, as already, you guys have already approved that, believe on the wife, on the water. Yeah, the water treatment one is kind of an ongoing one between Mike and Morgan.
No, we haven't officially approved that one.
Okay, sorry. There's another one coming that you probably have seen or maybe gonna approve here in the future. It's specific just to the water treatment, a P E R, preliminary engineering report. So that's kind of the next in-depth one that could happen out of some of this stuff. So like in this specific case, even though there's that water treatment one hanging out there separate, in this particular case, we wouldn't ever do anything. And you see when you get down to the pay section of this particular contract, we've said, hey, it's already under a separate contract. So there wouldn't be anything charged under that item. Also, what we would do is we do a real quick kind of an inventory this first time around of these different areas so that we all have a good understanding of the systems that are out there for each one of these infrastructure pieces. And part of that money you'll see in each one of those is to do that inventory piece. It might not go any further this year than just the inventory, you know, it might decide that, hey, we don't need to address anything further, or we don't need a highly detailed inventory, it can be a very cursory inventory. And so basically, with each one of these sections, you're only gonna pay us what we do hourly for each one of those sections. The numbers you see in here are not lump sums, they're a maximum.
Not to exceed.
They're not to exceed, so you're purely gonna pay the hourly to what, and we're gonna use our best economical personnel to do this inventory piece. In my case, I'm gonna use Zach for a lot of it. His hourly weight rate is a lot less than mine and he's just as competent as I am to do this, so.
Boy, that's for sure.
With a precious double.
In chippy.
The last conversation didn't, now you got to be here. So even though I'm gonna use the streets, for example, we've got a not to exceed of ten thousand dollars. Only if we get into a highly detailed look and then get into, because what what we would take after doing inventory and we say, yeah, this needs to be a focus for us for this year, let's say it's streets. We would go to the next step of actually picking, you know, because what we're gonna do out of this inventory, we'll create a color coding to where you see what streets are bad or what curve is bad, you know, the different areas. You say, hey, that's something we want to focus on this year, we'll actually go and then do cost estimates on those worst ones to ring back for you, and we have all this ready for you by your budget sessions. That way, as you head into budgets, you have an idea, hey, if we did these next four streets, it's gonna be X dollars. If we had a stormwater pond issue that we need to, we think is time to address, you're gonna have cost estimates on. So it's not only getting a good look at your inventory and where it rates as far as with compared to the other streets or compared to other storm sewer system, you're gonna have some costs built into it too, now, we're not gonna cost estimate every project, every detail out, but at least the ones that you say you want to focus on, we go ahead and do cost estimates on. So, and then also, as well as we do with everything with you guys, if we see a grant program opportunity that this would fit into, we're gonna bring it up and recommend it and say, okay, here's the deadline to get something turned in, so.
Are there any questions for Aaron?
So on this, are we agreeing to one year or how does this look?
Basically, what we would do is, this would be for one year, but we might use zero dollars of it, if Matt says, no, don't do anything yet. Or we might be a clerk to the maximum on every single one of them. And then we might come back next year and we might say, hey, it wasn't worth adding the storm sewer, you know, we don't need to look at stormwater. So next year, we'll answer focus on the other ones. So we could treat this, because of this is kind of a it's kind of a, what we would consider a task order, under which you already hired us for the on-call engineering piece, it's really we called we've been directed to ask, here's our price, is to go ahead and do these functions that you've already umbrella-wise hired us for, which is a multi-year contract.
Okay, so how much, is it, do you expect it to be more front-loaded than would we have more in this first year or?
It 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 all depends on which ones you would say you want to emphasize this year. If Matt, via your direction or city staff direction or whatever, came back to us and said, hey, we want the inventory done on five of these, then obviously those five are gonna get heavy loaded this year, but that inventory piece is already gonna be done for future years, if if.
So if you do streets this year, you wouldn't have a lot to do next year?
Not as much, right, next year. Yeah, we 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 redrive them again and like on streets, for example, we get Dale's input and we do our ranking and our color rating, and we'd say, here's what we found, Dale, Dale say, ah, did you miss this one over here? Did you look at it this way over here? And before we come back to staff and you guys, we have that read adjusted, so streets would still take some every year because you gotta drive all of them and re-rank them if they either got worse or
Right.
or we did something new to take them out of the ranking. But the other ones, you know, water distribution, other than it getting a year older, you're not gonna know the condition other than if Morgan says, hey, we broke another five valves this year, okay, we can put those if something happened, but the streets is kind of the one, and and the airport a little bit the same way, you have to go out and take a look, you know, the airport won't take years long, but so there's always gonna be a little cost
Right.
for that part of it every year that you want to emphasize that area. But like stormwater, once you do an inventory in it, unless we change something, we won't. It really, the streets is probably the one area of all this that
That has the most.
Other than the treatments, your water treatment, wastewater treatment, they're gonna change every year. Mostly because we're dealing with regulations that change every year and we also deal with mother nature that changes every year, so you got your end that's changing and the regs that govern the end is changing, so a little bit of that's gonna change, but Morgan has such good handle on that that as far as this goes and our part of it, it truly not taking a lot to put that together every year. I'd say the streets probably have the most hours every year to to build the baseline.
Any other questions?
We're just doing the the Hillsborough two-step on this one, so getting some more time to think about it, if you have more questions between here and.
Yeah, questions, please get back to Matt, Matt will relay them to me and I'll get an official map that you all can see. Matt did ask a question on here, if you look at the stormwater, why was it the ten thousand or a max not to exceed ten thousand? Part of that has to do with fact, if we, how detailed we get into it, because if for stormwater, believe it or not, you have eight basins in this town that water can run towards, it doesn't seem like that's could be the case, but you do. And so if we got to a detailed look into that structure, infrastructure piece, and we had to do detailed runoff calcs, it takes a fairly good amount of man-hours to construct the the computer modeling to run that runoff model. So that's why that one could be that high. I don't anticipate that being more than maybe a thousand dollars just for a quickie inventory. But if we get into those detailed runoffs, then it could go a lot more, so that's why that one's also a little higher than when you look at the average of them.
Okay, any further questions? Aaron, sorry for giving you a hard time, but thanks for being here. I'm not.
Just the way you see what that shows up under your door.
Yeah, right on. A little wastewater.
No, stormwater.
Oh, stormwater, okay.
I don't want to get in trouble with idiots.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up is mowing bids, Mr. Styles.
Yep, so we are looking at our mowing contracts, last year, we was, first year we did them. We had six areas that we did, I think overall, we were pretty pleased with the quality of what we got, the only negative being you know, the tragic accident with Ken Carlson, that was, that was really, that was awful. But I think we would like to continue mowing contracts moving into twenty-two season, which will start in April and usually runs till the end of October, sometimes into November. Just kind of depends. Last year, we had the six areas and what we'd like to do is actually add the park and the swimming pool to the list too, so maybe expand the museum piece to include the park and then the fairgrounds also has is adjacent to the swimming pool, so I think maybe can maybe put those two together. Last year, we spent about twenty-four, a little over twenty-four thousand on mowers, it sounds like a lot, but if we were gonna be doing that, we're somewhere close to thirty-one thousand in our estimated man-hours and equipment time, so those are things that we were able to kind of re-repurpose. And obviously, we were running a little short last year too, so one of the things we had talked about as an option is to hire back somebody just to do mowing and keep it all in-house, but not real confident we can hire anybody right now. We're struggling to hire some of our full-time positions and so finding somebody to do a mowing position that's seasonal, I'm not real confident and have a lot of luck with that. So we would like to continue going on and pursue this as as the contract mowing for this year. We're gonna have a few things that are gonna change out of that, like the old, old post office will no longer be in there, that's Tabor's deal. Obviously, the EMS site, we don't have to worry about that as as part of the mowing deal too, and it's kind of a a construction zone up there anyway right now, so we're have to wait till that gets cleaned up or do anything, but so that's, that's what we're looking at, unless there's some, some questions or comments or some, some kind of drawbacks to that you guys see, then we would put those together and then bring them back to you for for approval before we put them out to bid.
Bidding and everything would be similar to what you did last year.
Yeah, looking for a one, one, a monthly price, not like a per mowing price. What we'll do is determine how many times we would like to see that get mow each year, each month, and then kind of go from there, so. We were real happy with contractors, we had, we had pretty good, pretty good competition between them and felt pretty good about who we had, so. Would love to keep a few of them, I think they were very good and they do a good job, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to our quarterly strategic planning update, Mr. Styles.
Sir, so this is the end of the first quarter from when we finished our strategic plan, so what I did was put together a kind of an update, I used a matrix kind of style, and I hope to have some, some nice binders for you guys, you can help hand these and hold these in. And so I just went through each of the goals and sort of broke down sort of where we've been and what we've been doing on since, since we approved it back in October. So with, I just, I took them in alphabetical order, tier one goals, alphabetical order, tier two goals. For childcare, we have the, the community steering committee's been working on that, they've worked, they've been, been together for a couple of years now and continue to work on that, and they originally originally were focused on the hospital as as kind of thing, and we actually did a feasibility study, which is one of our goals for the old hospital, and I think K-State's got that pretty well wrapped up, but in that process of doing that, the the opportunity arose that Trinity Church may have an interest in donating their facility for, for this purpose, and so that, that actually lays out a lot better and is a lot more turnkey for us than the hospital, and so they've kind of shifted gears to looking at Trinity Men- Menonite Church. So it's one of those things that they're, they're sort of working through that process, it's a church that's decided at least has taken one vote to to close, but of course, there's a lot of, a lot to that process. But it it seems like it's moving pretty well, and I think that that's gonna be a really positive opportunity for us if they can, if they can do that. One of the things they're working on is, the, the group is working on is kind of the financial projections for that, operational costs, there's gonna be some costs to remodel the church, obviously. There's some grant money out there, especially through the COVID grants, there's a lot of money out there for some of those things. And what they're looking at doing is ninety-nine kids, because if you hit a hundred, it throws you into a completely different bracket with KDHE. So the ninety-nine spots is a little bit more than double than what we currently have at the Kids Connection Facility at the MB Church, so we'd be adding quite a few spots to the community if they were able to do that, so it's, it's really a pretty positive thing, I like it's moving forward and a lot of, a lot of interest in that, and that's one of those big things we need to address. And then we've also want to bring up our town development initiative, we started working with them and they are looking at the hospital as one of the first projects and we've, we've had some initial conversations on some additional uses for that, so I think it's gonna end up moving toward a housing kind of model. So either with Tabor or apartments for rental, I think that's kind of the direction we're heading. So there, they've already started their, their contract with us and have already started getting some, some traction with that, so feel pretty good about that. Then we move on to housing, if you kind of look at what we've got going on in housing there, we finished the housing assessment tools, we can check that one off the list. We mentioned when the, in the discussion here on the container houses, that there are three hundred people who've expressed an interest in living in Hillsborough, if they could find a place. If you go out and look at what's in the market right now, on the, on Friday, when I checked, there were four homes on the market. One was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand and the bottom one was nineteen. And there's a huge spread between what you're getting at those price points, so there's definitely still a, a strong need for housing. And then I, I mentioned our, our housing policy that we, municipal policy we passed in September. Neighborhood revitalization program is something we're working on, I had a couple of conversations with the county about their program and kind of how it works. Probably bringing something for you guys to look at in February as to maybe going with their own program, and then we've also found some local redevelopment programs that a couple of other communities are doing that support remodeling of existing housing, so I think there's some opportunities there. We adopted the IBC International Building Code, which has provisions for container homes and tiny homes in it. Obviously, we're having conversations about that and I don't know what we want to do with, with the feedback we got tonight. You know, we hadn't, we didn't really talk about what, what to do after that, but I think it may be something that the planning commission needs to tackle. I think Mr. Payne was correct and that, that's what I would recommend to you is to send it back to the planning commission and have some conversations at that level. They've already had one and didn't do much with it at that point, but that would be kind of my thinking on it, but it does have in our strategic plan that we find ways to look at alternative construction, because I think we need to at least look at it as an opportunity, so. And then I also want to mention the Birchwood Apartments, that is being renovated by a company called JC Enterprises, and they begin renting those out in January, they actually have one rented. There are twelve units in there, there's a mix of three-bedroom, two-bedroom and one-bedroom apartments and their market rate. So the one-bedroom is six and a quarter a month, seven hundred for the two-bedroom, eight hundred for the three-bedroom. I think he said they have a list, so I'm not sure how many are still available and I know they're still working, so.
Twelve more units.
Twelve more units, twelve more units of housing, which is great, back on the market. The workforce one's probably the one we've done the least with, where we've talked a little bit about it, but we haven't gotten a ton of actual tangible stuff going on with that one. Probably the Vegas one is Tabor is working on a couple of things that could potentially be pretty, pretty strong for the community on entrepreneurship, that are looking at doing an EDA grant to to help with their business building, which would also potentially have a business incubator in it, so there's some cool things going on with that. We also have our youth entrepreneurship challenge or competition, excuse me, that happens in March every year. Hillsborough High School dominates that, just generally speaking. It has for the last several years, but now this year, it's gonna be back here in Hillsborough at Tabor, and so that'll be good, and I think the DECA competition was at the end of.
It's, it's the twenty.
Into January.
Yeah.
Calendar up in here, but DECA is the, kind of the college equivalent to that.
I will tell you here in a second.
So those, those are kind of the big things, we're also having some, kind of facilitating some conversations about low.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight to Tabor, okay. And so we're also having some conversations with local trade people about potentially having some kind of training center for tradesmen, electricians building, to try to train more people to, to be able to be plumbers and builders and electricians. So that's kind of a conversation we're trying to help facilitate with some local businesses and school district and HCC, so that's one of the things we're working on there. The community development section, we're continuing to work on a marketing plan, I'm gonna move that marketing plan over to the convention visitors bureau, I think it kind of fits better with that, they've got some money too that they can spend on helping promote some of that stuff. Fiber project is complete, that's a big one, that's got knocked off the list. The community plaza spray park stuff is here and I'm working with installers now, trying to get that scheduled up. We're still kind of working on a bathroom solution and that's one of the things that our town development's working with us on too, so hopefully we'll have that. Next meeting on February first, the fourth grade class and garden club from Hillsborough Elementary is gonna be here to present to you guys to talk about community garden and Stan, Stan Thiessen, who sort of started this community garden thing last year or the year before, has been helping them along, and so you'll have fourth graders next meeting. That'll be a good time. And then we're also gonna meet with, the, the last thing is the downtown development group to talk about regulations to help support commerce, we're gonna get those guys together in February, we haven't got a date on the calendar yet. Kind of waiting for some things to calm down a little bit. Financial stability, one of the things we just. Uh, financial stability, uh, one of the things we just talked about was the CIP. Um, and one of the parts of that, uh, we didn't mention when Darren was in the air, uh, is we're also gonna look at mixing the CIP with also our cap, our uh, capital equipment stuff. We don't have that very well nailed down. That needs to happen too. Uh, we have a lot of needs in equipment and buildings, and we need to put that in the plan as well, so we can start addressing that. Uh, we have a comprehensive fee schedule drafted that triplet, uh, Wolf and Garrettson did. Kimberlin finished that before she left, and we're still in the process, because it's like twenty-nine pages worth of fees we have to review, so we're still kind of working through that. Um, and then we'll look at utility stuff and fund balances in November. Uh, public safety, we sold the the land for the EMS building, and so we've kind of got that one under under control. I think that we've accomplished that goal last year. Um, I don't know when they're gonna be finished. I think sometime in the next month or two, so they're working hard on it. Uh, the fire department's got a station task force to begin kind of working out what they have, what they need. And so they've got that going, and it's been kind of bubbling around for a few months. Uh, the fire department's gonna, or the police department's gonna have to start looking at their stuff too. Um, but that's one of the other things. We're gonna have a demolition contractor come in and look at AMPI to give us an idea of what could be saved and what couldn't be. Uh, we'd really like to get them out of that building. Um, I think we're gonna have some interesting conversations about how much space they need though, because there's no way we can efficient, there's no way we can efficiently afford to build them the amount of space they have in that building now. Um, and so they're gonna have to be a little bit give and take there to figure out what we're gonna do. Um, and then we're also gonna have a a meeting with Rants, and it got delayed a couple of different times from COVID, got rescheduled. Um, people haven't gotten sick, so hopefully we'll have that conversation front end of the month, because there are some grants out there related to public safety uh, and federal COVID funding that could help potentially pay for some of those things, so. That is all I have on the quarterly strategic plan update. We'll do this every quarter, just kind of keep you in the loop as to what's been going on. Obviously, if there's something happens before the quarter, we'll tell you about that too, but I want to make sure we keep it top of mind and everyone has an idea of what it looks like and kind of where we're going.
Any comments or questions? I appreciate that, and you know, I appreciate, you know, the the council for uh, for the foresight to go ahead and put together a strategic plan, because I find it very helpful to keep us focused. I mean, because everything we do, I mean, it's easy to get, to get off in the weeds, and 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 when you have this and it's top of mind, you know, we're we're focusing on the right things, and as I think we found out at the league meeting in Topeka, um, you know, we were uh, we were pretty good, because every other town in Kansas followed it, followed after us with the same priorities, so, you know, I'm glad that we've taken a leadership position there.
Taking the bull by the horns.
Yes, indeed. Okay, well, now we'll move on, let you talk some more, give your city administrators report.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. So we've got, uh, one of the things we are working on is a a task grant, which is a tourism grant through uh, the state. They brought in some money through COVID money from the federal government, um, and working on putting the other submission that include the community plaza project and some of the downtown stuff. Uh, I think that we could make a pretty strong case for that. Um, they have a, it's a fifty-fifty grant, and the minimum award is a hundred thousand dollars, but we can uh, use the money that's been raised for the community plaza as part of that grant. We can also do in-kind stuff, so the work we're planning on doing there uh, could potentially be counted as matching for that grant. I don't know if we're gonna be, I I I would think we have a pretty competitive grant based on, you know, what we've got going on with that. Uh, I'm not sure what the state's thought process is, because they look like they're targeting some bigger stuff with this, so I'm not sure where we'll end up, but we'll certainly put in something and hopefully get in the mix there. Uh, patrol unit, want to let everybody know that that has arrived. It actually came in a little earlier. I think we thought it would. Um, outfitting's going on that, and should be getting graphics here in the next couple of days, maybe even today. It might win in for, no, tomorrow, I guess. Um, yeah, so we went and and we also, we got a note for that, uh, bank note on that for two and a quarter percent, so. Uh, we shopped around locally, but we ended up in Marion, uh, Marion National Bank, because they had the best deal. Um, we chose to do that because we think there's maybe some more equipment needs that are gonna come up that was, would have come out of that account. Uh, we talked about it when we bought the vehicle that we may do this. Um, and so we just went with that note, because we got a pretty good deal on it, and then uh, we'll we'll save a little bit of money back to help help with some other things. Um, Salem Home Hospital is really more of a public building commission thing, but I wanted to get everybody know, as public building commission, as the city council and public building commission, uh, that the HVAC system with Salem has been separated officially. Um, so Salem went ahead and did that on their own, um, and so that is the final last thing that had connected those two buildings, and so now they are completely independent. Uh, which is awesome. That's great. Um, and like I mentioned in the strategic plan, they're gonna be uh, our town development's working on getting that redeveloped as some housing, so that's kind of one of our first things. So hopefully we'll have some more direction, I think, uh, in the next few months, based on what the conversation with Tabor's been like, so we'll see. Uh, garden club, mention them. They'll be here next, at the next meeting. Very exciting, always fun. Uh, health savings report for December. Things are going pretty well for the first six months of our plan. Uh, we have a a different plan year in July to June plan year, and so right in the middle of it, and we're sitting at twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars saved. Uh, that would have previously been just gone to lacrosse and blue shield, and now we have that sitting in our account, so it's it's working well. Uh, we still have, I I'm always surprised by what the information shows us. We do have a lot of people that have high um, prescription drug costs, which I was a little surprised by, but um, there may be some ways that we can a- adapt our plan a little bit more to to help with that in the future too. Uh, I got the KPP bill there for you. Uh, that was a big chunk of our vouchers this week, that's to pay that. Uh, eighteen thousand, a little over eighteen thousand on the surcharge, um, so that's been about eleven months. We've had that in place. Uh, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars ninety-eight cents is what we've had in surcharges up to this point. We're still about seventy thousand behind on the collection on our side, so there's a difference there. And also had our our AMI project, our meters, um, uh, bill for that eighteen hundred dollars, so. Uh, then I want to let everybody know I'm gonna be out of the office next three days, so you can catch me on phone, text, or email on emergency. And that is everything I had, I promise.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for for Matt? All right, um, we now is there, uh, we're gonna have a public comment section that would be exclusive of the uh, container home conversation. Uh, is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on something besides container homes? Hearing none, we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Driggers.
So I guess I'd go to Matt, when you were saying Larry was bringing up passing something to the planning commission. Is that something that you would start to put together? Do you need?
So, yeah, we would, um, how I would approach that is to let the planning commission take a look at regulations related to container homes.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, you've got a couple of different options. I mean, you can outright, if you want, if you wanted to go in that direction of banning it, you could outright strike the language from the building code and say we're not gonna allow that um, type of construction. Uh, but I think there's probably a better way to do that, um, potentially looking at a conditional use structure where you know, if somebody wants to do a development of those, they have to go through a conditional use process, and so then you can have questions like, what are these gonna look like? And how is this gonna lay out? You could have those conversations in that process, and there would be a public portion of that. That would be kind of how I would recommend looking at it.
Okay, because based on the way, I mean, I understood like your, your question and answer that you had there, somebody could build a container home in any lot that doesn't have covenants against it right now.
Sure could.
And that's, that's how the code's written currently, so it's not really about a development.
Nope.
Right, that could be happening tomorrow on a lot that's empty.
As long as they met all the building requirements.
Right, the six hundred
Minimum square footage. You know, it's gotta have all the international building code for plumbing and electric. All that stuff's gotta happen.
Right.
Um, and that's what we've been doing with these containers over here. They've had to meet all the building code requirements. And there's been a little bit of give and take on that, trying to figure out what works, and um, you know, Felix has had to go back and redo a few things, honestly, so. Um, yeah, so if somebody wanted to come in and do it right now, they could. I mean, it wouldn't be, we would still have to see with anything related to shipping containers and alternate construction. We have to see an engineered or architectural set.
That's part of the code.
That's part of the code, so they have to provide that no matter what, if they're gonna be doing that, so. Yeah, it's not like they're gonna just go out randomly throwing things up and smashing containers together and trying to do that. I mean, they still have to pass all that stuff, so.
Okay, so you'd start by recommending that, that that happens to the planning commission. So there's not really anything before us. It would be more in front of the planning commission.
That is, that is why you have a planning commission. That's what they do, and so they can, they can hear those.
Just, just so we're clear on the process, that that starts with the planning and zoning commission. And then you can, things can go depending on how things uh, happen there, that they can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Which is another separate group, but ultimately it will come back
Sure.
to the council.
Yeah, if there's any kind of change in
Right. So their advisory in that sense.
Right. I think, you know, what I heard people saying was again, and and from my, my conversations, which have been many with with peoples, I'm sure you guys have probably had several conversations yourselves. It's it's really, what do they look like? You know, and the question was posed to me, well, would you want one of these next door to you? And and my answer was, it depends on what it looked like.
Which is the same of any kind of home construction.
Correct, you know, and uh, you know, I, there's been several points made that uh, we have a number of uh, of uh, blighted homes already existing in the community, and you know, uh, I think it was Mr. Payne that pointed out that, well, we wanna, we want to uh, have our entrance ways. You know, we we don't want the entrance ways to our communities to look bad, but at the same time, I think we already, that problem already exists. You know, if you think about, uh, think about coming in on Ash Street and in in some of that, you know, I think we, we can all agree that there's already
Well, one of them we own, which is the MPI.
So, you know, and and and, you know, over the years, a- as we all know, the council has dealt with many different types of variances, and and I mean, we have uh, we have a mobile home uh, on second and uh, second street, and and I'm not sure if it's Madison or or where that is, but there's, there's a mobile home there. And there's a mobile home up on Third Street, you know, Third and and Jeff, I don't know, Jefferson, maybe. But anyway, you know, those, those things, and then there's one at the end of Main Street. There's a double wide that went in there. So, I mean, you know, there's been times in in past councils that have allowed people to do things that are different than you know, what was existing there and in 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 place, so I mean, you know, we have some, some precedent for that, and and you know, the other thing is, ultimately, I understand people's concern, I really do, and and, you know, but I also understand that beauty's in the eye of the beholder, if you will, and and you know, what looks attractive to some people might not look attractive to others. I I I certainly get that, so, you know, it it might make some sense to to uh, ask the planning commission to take a look at that and and come up with some minimum standards, you know, that uh, in terms of the aesthetic value, as much as you could, as much as you could address that. I know, I think Larry made a comment regarding the the exterior, the the painting, you know, painting, making sure that the, you know, the shipping container owner's logo wasn't part of the, part of the visual appeal of 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 a house, you know, and things of that nature. And so that might make some sense to me to have them take a look at that and uh, and then come back with some recommendations that we could, that we could further, further discuss.
But in that, in that case, that might be an addition to the code, like you'd be you'd be adding some
I I mean, you know,
Some specifics.
We have some neighborhoods in town that have covenants, you know, and and those covenants re- you know, cover a lot of the concerns that that people have, that you're not gonna build the things that are going to detract from the visual appeal of the, of that particular neighborhood. In these, in this, in this instance, those, those don't exist, you know, but some of that may be able to be handled by the planning commission and some of their recommendations that we could, uh, that we could consider going forward. Because I think we all can, we we all need to understand we need housing. You know, we recognize that we need housing, and the question then becomes is, well, what is the right kind of housing that that's needed? And you know, the the other fact is, is we don't have building contractors lined up at the city limits waiting to get in and start building houses here in Hillsborough. So, you know, but
I find it important that we don't as a city council, we're not determining what kind of houses go in what areas, other than a very baseline code. And that's, I think that needs to be very much recognized that
Well, I, you know, I, I think, I think if I'm hearing what you're saying is, you know, it's not our job to to pick winners and losers in the marketplace.
Or determine what's aesthetically appealing or not.
Right.
As a dangerous game.
It's tough, yeah. You know, and so it's a, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough issue, but you know, again, people people have a right and that in a, in in need to be heard, and as a community, we need to to work together, and sometimes working together is a struggle, and and you know, it's not easy, but uh, you know, I guess if you were expecting easy when you signed up for this job, you know, oops. So, yeah, but it's our job to uh, to represent everyone in the community. I mean, that's our, that is our job. So, and I pre- again, I appreciate everybody that that came and spoke, and I felt like everyone was uh, was uh, you know, to the point and and, you know, was civil and and uh, again, even though people are passionate about it, I I appreciate that we kept it very, uh, very high-end, so I think that speaks well of our community also. Councilman McCarty.
You were talking about that trailer. That's on Lincoln, I think.
Lincoln, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it used to be an old dilapidated house there, and I remember they had a big argument about that, put that trailer there, and the trailer looks a lot better than that old house.
I I I understand, I mean, well, you know, and and to your point, you know, decisions are made, you know, on on individual circumstances, and then and then, you know, sometimes you end up with sometimes a little bit of a crazy quilt of things, and and that can be a challenge too, you know.
I can see the people over there, that that they had to look across the street and saw a sea-land container box, or whatever they are, want to use on blocks where I'd be upset too, you know, but I'd like to see one that was finished. I'd like to see a picture of one that looked like it's supposed to look, you know, that would make a big difference. But what's it, you know, they could put little houses in there too, who knows, you know, have lots of little houses.
Well, you know, we already had a s- a stick-built house built there, and you know, I've had a lot of people tell me, you know, the, that they, that they didn't like that one.
I know.
You know, as I told many people, if you go inside that house and you see the way it's laid out and the amenities that it had, I felt like it was uh, it was well-designed on the inside, you know, and again, you get into that aesthetics question, and uh, again, I think that's a slippery slope.
I thought it looked better than an empty lot there.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Councilman Lowen.
Yes, I have a couple of things I would like to say. One of them is, um, I was very appreciative of the fact that people came and 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 talked about the issue here today. I uh, appreciate all the opinions, and I think they did the the thing that they should do. And they showed up and and they shared their thoughts and ideas, and I, I think that's how things are supposed to work. Um, the second thing, I just wanted to say thank you for changing the time of our meetings. I have appreciated it greatly, um, and I appreciate the flexibility of the council to do that this time around, and um, I'm not sure everybody's gonna be ready for the fourth, the four-thirty thing again, but uh, uh, just wanted to say thank you so much for for doing that, and I, I feel like uh, uh, I just feel like you guys have gone out of your way to make things work for me, and I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Councilman Bye.
Uh, don't have much to say. I just, it's been a pretty wild two weeks since I've been sworn in with the whole container. You have to get people calling me. Just trying to ride the storm and appreciate all you guys' help and adding some, so that's all I got.
Okay. Well, that, it did, it happens. I mean, it is Well, that, it, it happens. I mean, it is, it is a little bit of waves. I mean, we can go for, for a long time with some pretty calm water and then there'll be an issue that comes along and, and people get passionate about it. And, and want to, as David said, that's exactly what they should do is, uh, is make their voices heard. And, uh, you know, again, I think that, uh, that, uh, we could, we can say was with, uh. With what I've heard around the table, you know, I could think you can take that as the direction of the council is to, uh, take this back to the planning and zoning. Committee and, or commission and have them see if they can't work on some standards around these homes that would help us. You know, get our, get our head around this a little better, you know, given the lack of what we can see and touch and feel, so. I think that would be helpful. And I hope that, that people that were here would appreciate that and that, uh, that, you know, that, that, that's it. You know, I also want to say that I appreciate Felix's, uh, willingness to invest at Hillsborough. I mean, you know, for people to come in, like I said, and, and want to do something and want to do something that, that to me sounds positive. We just have to make sure that it is positive, I guess. But, uh, you know, those people aren't, uh, aren't just standing at the, like I said, at the, at the city limits waiting to get in. So, you know, we have to, we have to, uh, also be appreciative of people that want to, want to do things here. So, you know, it's a, it's a balancing act. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council?
What day is that deal in Topeka?
Uh, it's next Wednesday.
What time are we leaving?
I won't get back to you on that.
Sounds good.
Exactly.
Yeah, well.
I just need to coordinate it with Ford.
Yeah.
We'll be back to four at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll be back at four o'clock. Yeah. February first.
I won't be here.
You're going to be on a cruise, right? Good luck.
All right.
Sounds fun.
Good luck.
Right, I'll, good luck to be.
There's no other business that needs to come before the council, we're adjourned.